Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order this meeting of Arlington ISD Board of Trustees on May 18, 2023 at 5:07. Members of the public may access this meeting via AISD website at www.aisd.net. One or more trustees may participate in this meeting via video conference call. A quorum of the Board of Trustees will be physically present at the Administration Building. First on our agenda is the swearing in of our two new trustees. And presiding over that swearing, we have Honorable Judge Carrie Walker and Ms. Amy Smith. I think we'll start with place six, and that's Brooklyn Richardson and Honorable Judge Carrie Walker, if you'll both step to the podium.
Well, if I can get my hands to work. I'm going to get it.
All right. If I could get you to raise your right hand for me, ma'am. In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, I, Brooke Richardson, do solemnly swear.
I, Brooke Richardson, do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the Office of Trustee.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of Office of Trustee.
Place six.
Place six.
Arlington Independent School District.
Arlington Independent School District.
Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right.
And now she's signing her life away. She is now ours. And now we come to place seven. LeAnn Haynes, swearing LeAnn in, is Amy Smith.
In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, and raise your right hand, yes. I, LeAnn Haynes.
I, LeAnn Haynes.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the Office of Trustee.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the Office of Trustee.
Place seven.
Place seven.
Arlington Independent School District.
Arlington Independent School District.
Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
They are now trustees. And now if I could have both ladies join me at the podium. In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, this is to certify that at a general election held on May 6, 2023, LeAnn Haynes was duly elected Arlington Independent School District Trustee, place seven. And she will also get the fancy pin, the special pin that we all wear. And now, in the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, this is to certify that at a general election held on May 6, 2023, Brooke Richardson was duly elected Arlington Independent School District Trustee, place six. And she gets the special pin. I would now like to thank each and every one of you for coming to this very special ceremony. Thank you for taking an interest in AISD and welcoming our two trustees. We thank you so much for being here, and please, you're welcome anytime to come to any of our meetings. We thank you, and... Le- oh. LeAnn, would you like to say anything to the crowd?
I don't know.
Is that one on? Frank's coming with a hand.
Are we sure? Oh, there you go. All right. First, I just want to thank everyone for coming this evening to see Brooklyn and myself get sworn in. It is an honor. I know that we are both overwhelmed and excited for the opportunity to serve. I especially want to thank my family for being here and for standing strong with me the last several months. It's been a journey, so I appreciate all that they have done. My Girl Scouts, who I love, are here, so that makes me very happy. And then my team of campaign momagers who helped get me through this, thank you so much. To everyone else, I'm looking forward to serve, and thank you for the honor.
I think LeAnn said it exactly, of without our friends and our family, there's no way we could have done the last few months. Thank you for your support. Thank you for the friends who I've known forever. Thank you for those that I've just met, and thank you for those who I don't even know, but who were in the trenches and were able to share why AISD and parents and families and students are important to me. Thank you, Nolley and Reed and Keith and Mom and Dad and Bo for always believing in me.
The Board of Trustees on May 18, 2023, beginning at 5:15, will convene into closed section, session pursuant to sections 551.071 through 551.084 and 551.089 of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act for the topics set forth on our agenda. We will reconvene at approximately 7:00 PM. At this time, I will reconvene into open session, this meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees for May 18, 2023, beginning at 7:46. Thank you all for joining us tonight. Our meetings are open to the public, and we welcome everyone, and thank you for participating in public school. While our meetings are open to the public, this is a meeting, and we have business to conduct. Disruptions will not be permitted. Anyone who disrupts the meetings or speaks when others are speaking may be asked to leave or be escorted out by the security attending the meeting. We welcome civic input, but we insist that we remain respectful and civil. Thank you for your cooperation. We will start our meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join Mrs. Richardson in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now the Texas flag.
On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated. Please silence all cell phones and electronic devices to avoid disruptions to those around you. And now, if you would please join me in a moment of silence. One of the items that preceded this part of the meeting was the swearing in of our two newly elected trustees, Brooklyn Richardson and LeAnn Haynes. Congratulations. We're so excited to have you both, and I know that you're going to be, you're going to do a good job on the board, and you will be an attribute to us. So thank you so much for being here. I don't, I think they saw a little bit of how much time and work sometimes it takes, but we know that they're up for it, and we know that they're going to do a great job. All right. We now come to open forum for agenda items. As stated on the posted agenda, members of the public who desire to address the Board regarding an item on this agenda are required to register at www.aisd, no later than 3:00 PM the day of the Board meeting. Ms. Benjamin, do we have anyone registered to speak this evening?
Yes, ma'am. We have two registered speakers for agenda items.
We'll start with Richard Weber. This is a routine part of the school board's agenda for regularly scheduled meetings. This segment of the meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to share their views with the trustees on items that are on the agenda tonight. It is not intended to be a discussion or a debate, and trustees will not reply to the speakers. Derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated. Personnel matters are not appropriate, subjects for open forum. You will now, you will have two minutes to speak, and Ms. Benjamin will notify you when your time is up. Go ahead, Mr. Weber.
Hello, I'm Richard Weber. I've been in the AISD for 44 years and have had four children graduate from the AISD. I wish to speak about the 2023-24 budget, which is a later discussion you're going to have. I speak as an overburdened taxpayer, and my major concern is recapture and Robin Hood. It's also known as Robin Hood. Basically, what happens is the state decides that you're too rich, you've been taxing your citizens so much, we're going to take some of that money and give it to your competition just to balance the playing field. This is a 0% good thing as far as efficiency that I see as a taxpayer. I don't like it. I mean, it's, it's not good, it's not, it's certainly not efficient use of our tax dollars. The AISD already has the highest M&amp;O rate within Tarrant County of all ISDs currently. I have two questions for your discussion, which, if you know them, is fine. If you don't know them, I certainly hope you ask and bring it up. Number one, how much is being budgeted for recapture? And number two, what has to be done to avoid any recapture expenditures? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. I now call Cindy Calaluka.
Good evening, Ms. Calaluka. Go ahead.
Good evening. Haven't seen much of you this year, and I'm sorry for that, but I couldn't retire without coming up and speaking to y'all and thanking you. It's rough times for everybody right now, budget-wise, and I don't know how you all do what you do. I appreciate that your heart is in it. I know that you cannot please everyone, or maybe even anyone, because you have to stretch it so thin. And from the teachers, I appreciate you making sure that we have some of that going towards us. But I just wanted to also make sure to say thank you for having your heart in this and working so hard to make sure AISD will be the best that it can possibly be. Thank you all.
Thank you so much. We appreciate that. Now we move to the next items on our agenda, and that's the organization of the Board of Trustees, which is the election of Board Officers. It is our policy each year at this meeting in which we seat trustees for new terms. The election of the Board Officers be placed on the agenda, and at this time, the gavel is handed to the superintendent for the purpose of beginning our elections. This is the only time this happens, and it's for the purpose of beginning our elections. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler, and I would ask if we have a motion and a second for the Office of President.
I move for Melody Fowler to continue as President of this board.
Motion made by Mr. Wilbanks, second by Mr. Chapa for Ms. Fowler to remain as the President of the AISD Board of Trustees. Do we have any discussion or other nominations? Seeing none, I would ask if you would cast your vote. With that, all in the affirmative, congratulations, Melody Fowler, for being President again. Good job.
Do we have a nomination? Pardon me?
Yeah.
You want to do both of them together? Do we have a nomination for Vice President and a nomination for Secretary?
Thank you, President Fowler. I nominate Justin Chapa as VP and Sarah McMurro as Secretary.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Thank you, Mr. Wilbanks. We have a nomination for Mr. Chapa to be Vice President and Ms. McMurro for Secretary. If there's no discussion, please vote. We have Mr. Chapa that will continue serving as our Vice President, and we have Ms. McMurro that will continue serving as our Secretary. Thank you both for your dedication and your time. We appreciate it very much. I also really appreciate your support of me and allowing me to serve another year as President. I truly love AISD, and I love working with each and every one of you, and I look forward to another very productive, positive year. So thank you so much for this opportunity. Hang on, I lost my place. Next, we consider administrative ratifications and appointments. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler, and I'd like to recommend that the Board ratify the appointment of the individuals discussed in closed session for Principal of Blanton Elementary and Principal for Corey Academy of Fine Arts and Dual Language.
Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Fowler. I move to ratify the appointment of the individuals discussed in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. We have a motion by Mr. Chapa. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. Reich. The motion carries. Thank you. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler, and I'd like to introduce the Principal for Blanton Elementary, Migdalia Castillo. You'll see her bio here in a minute, but Migdalia attended University of Puerto Rico for Bachelor of Science in Biology, Texas Wesleyan for Master of Ed in Bilingual Education, most recently an Assistant Principal in Grand Prairie ISD at Zeguiene Elementary, has also been an Assistant Principal in Mansfield and a dual-language teacher in Mansfield. And her career has also led to be a bilingual teacher at Berry Elementary and a bilingual teacher at Bergen Elementary. So Migdalia, congratulations. Next, we introduce the Principal for Corey Academy Fine Arts and Dual Language, Ms. Cynthia Anthony. Okay. All right. So you'll see Cynthia's bio here in a minute, but she attended UT Arlington for Bachelor of Arts in Interdisciplinary Studies, UT Arlington for Master of Ed in Curriculum and Instruction, most recently the Assistant Principal at Corey Academy, but has been a kindergarten, a third, and a fourth-grade dual-language teacher at Corey, and has also taught first and second grade, teacher and reading specialist. Cynthia, congratulations.
I love it.
We're very happy.
Really? We couldn't tell. We didn't know. Well, welcome. We're so glad both of you are able to be here this evening and know that you have our full support. Congratulations on your new positions, and we know that you are going to do a tremendous job. So thank you both for agreeing to step up to the position, and we look forward to seeing many successes coming from you. Thank you so much. And we know that you want to stay until the very, very end. But we certainly understand that it is a school night, and you probably have homework, so if you need to go, you may. And we have a little backdrop back there if you want to stop and get pictures. I think that would be awesome for this special occasion, but thank you all so much for being here. We will now move to our first presentation, and it's the Financial Futures Committee Presentation.
Thank you, President Fowler, and I'll ask Carla Martin to join us on the podium and make sure we get a proper introduction of our FFC.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Good evening, President Fowler, Board. They're having so much fun. So we have our Financial Futures Committee. We met a few times during the course of the school year along with, we had representatives from Ms. McMurro, Dr. Reich, and Mr. Hibbs, and we've gone through and talked about all kinds of things regarding the finances of AISD. But I would like to introduce April Pettit. She was, she was our chair for this year, and she will be presenting the presentation to you all. Thank you.
Welcome, Ms. Pettit. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you, President Fowler. I want to start by thanking Carla and Darla and Terry and all of the staff. They are just incredible to work with on this committee, and I don't know that you could say this about a lot of finance departments, but they're fun. Like, they truly make it a pleasure, and it just surprises me every time that it's just so much fun to go and talk about finance. Okay. Dr. Cavassos and President Fowler and trustees, on behalf of the committee, I just want to start first by saying thank you for continuing to have the Financial Futures Committee. That signals to us and to the district that gaining community input is still very valuable to you guys. So I just want to say thank you for taking the time to read our suggestions and hear them tonight and hopefully carry them forward for future budget planning. Okay, the focus and purpose. Providing findings and recommendations from community stakeholders to the Board of Trustees relating to budget and long-range financial planning that supports the district's strategic plan. That is what we do. On the screen here is our committee members. We don't have all of them here tonight because this is a very busy time of year, so we knew most of them couldn't make it. But if you are here and you serve on the Financial Futures Committee, could you please stand to be recognized? Thank you, guys, so much. These people take time out of their very busy schedules to do the important work because they understand how important this is to the community, so I greatly appreciate it. Committee meetings. Carla touched on this briefly. This is a list of our meetings that we've had over the past school year. You'll see budget and finance, tax rates, enrollment trends, staffing compensation. It's a lot. It's some complex stuff for people who don't deal with that every day, so again, I thank the committee for being willing to spend the time to learn as much as they can about The last time we brought recommendations before this board was in the fall of 2021. We did not present in 2022 in the fall because we've shifted our presentations to better align with budget planning. But I'm not going to read through these in the interest of time, but all the recommendations last time were around ESTR funds, how to spend them, and how that could look going forward Now, this is the fun part. This is what our committee did. So we had lots of discussion, lots of ideas during our work sessions, and we had to try to pull them all together, and these are kind of the three themes that emerged that we felt we could get all of our ideas under, and those are safety and stability, attendance and community building, and then robust marketing that will support the enrollment loss, vacancies, and increased pride district-wide. So first up, safety and stability. We had lots of discussions on this one. We all agreed, you know, academic goals are harder to accomplish when you don't feel like you're in a safe environment. The emotional health of students and teachers and the staff, we know, continues to suffer from COVID. It has not recovered. And we know that the emotional health of students will have a direct effect on the morale of the staff that works with them, and that we agreed overall, you know, the retention of the staff is important to have a stable learning environment. So we brainstormed, and we came up with some ideas. And possible ways that the committee felt that we could address this was to consider recruiting and retaining support staff by providing a competitive compensation wage. We felt that the, you know, the starting off teacher salary was good, but that maybe there was opportunity to improve it with a support staff. And we talked about how important those support staff positions are to the teachers on a day-to-day basis. We talked about consider expanding the stipends that go to the Title I teachers and the teachers that are in the student support network schools. We acknowledge that there already are stipends available, but look at maybe possibly increasing those. We talked about consider prioritizing retention by creating incentives for teachers after the five-year mark. There was a lot of talk about how, like, the starting salary was really good, but as they got further along in their teaching journey, there was maybe room to incentivize them to stay so that we can retain some of those teachers longer. Let's see. Consider providing additional security to help students and staff feel safe. Just taking a look at the numbers that we have now, is there any room there to increase security on campuses? And then the last one is one that we have talked about in years past, just continuing commitment to be a top tier in each category for salaries, teaching, administrators, and support staff. Attendance. So our talk around attendance. We acknowledge that students who attend school regularly are shown... are shown to achieve at a higher level, that attendance is a predictor of graduation rates. But we also note that parents are more likely to keep their students home now post-COVID and not have that accountability always to send them to school when they don't want to go. We know that district funding is tied to AISD's average daily attendance rate, and we felt that along the same conversation of attendance, that creating a more of a community relations position within school offices could be a benefit, whether it's adding maybe another attendance clerk or just like a new position that would handle this, that could get to know the families more, and therefore there'd be more accountability with attendance and with the students. Other ideas were to evaluate the continuation of campus attendance incentive funding. We did acknowledge that there is efforts on that already, but maybe to look at how that's going so far and if it needed to be done a different way or continued or increased. Consider a position that focuses on working on building community relations with parents and guardians at the school, and then engage community organizations and businesses for partnerships. And here, the thought was maybe just, at the beginning, just getting things donated that could be used as incentives for good attendance. But then those relationships you build with maybe local nonprofits or businesses could then continue to grow, and they become a longtime partner with the school. Robust marketing. We were a very, very positive committee. We love so many things that are going on in the district right now, but we feel like everyone should know about them because we know about them, but we don't feel like everyone else knows about them. We said that positive messaging can lead to greater pride among the staff, the students, and the residents. And we think there should be increased visibility and showcasing of our accomplishments. And we think that could ultimately attract more people to our district, and then the people that we already have will have that pride and want to stay. And one of the ideas that we discussed that I thought was really good was to survey the staff, kind of doing like interview, man on the street, what makes them most proud to work for our district. And then we could use those results for some kind of positivity campaign, and it would just increase that school pride across the district. We also thought it's important to highlight that we already do offer a competitive salary. We know there's always chatter everywhere about wanting higher pay and which district pays more, and we feel like we are doing a good job there, and we just need to get the word out more. And then, lastly, promote the specialized programs the district offers, not just to potential participants, but to everybody. We were really surprised to learn a lot of people on our committee didn't know about dual-language academies or didn't know that there was a leadership academy. And we've discussed, and we figured that maybe it's because it's not marketed toward them, but it would still be good for them to know about. They may have, you know, a junior in high school that can't take advantage of them, but they can sure share it with their network or friends if they know about it. So we thought that was an opportunity there. So all of those discussions led to our formal recommendations. Recommendation one. Given that safety is a growing concern, and given that stability with our students and staff, their emotional health is needed, and given that retention of our teachers is very important, we recommend the Board of Trustees invest funds into safety and stability efforts that were outlined in the presentation earlier. Recommendation two. Given that state funding is based on attendance, and given that enrollment is down, and given that attendance is directly tied to our students' achievements, we recommend that the Board of Trustees continue to evaluate the use of funds to provide resources for attendance incentives and staffing to support and build relationships with parents and guardians. And our last recommendation. Given that enrollment is down and given that staff vacancies are up, and given that we offer many specialized programs and competitive compensations, we recommend the Board of Trustees continue to invest funds and focus on marketing of all the positives in our district to build pride and to attract students and staff to our district. And that is the end of our presentation, our recommendations. Thank you for your time for listening.
Thank you so much, Ms. Pettit. This was wonderful, and I love that these committees are made up of community members, and it's not just us making decisions and this kind of thing. It's people from the community that are actually discussing things and coming up with recommendations that we always look at and take. So I love that you brought that up about them being comprised of community members and everybody working together. Do we have any trustees with questions or comments? Ms. McMurro?
Thank you, President Fowler, and you said it best. Our Financial Futures Committee is made up of many stakeholders, and I just wanted to very quickly thank Ms. Pettit and co-chair Blake Davidson and all of our members of the FFC, the teachers, the entrepreneurs. We also, we have a very diverse group on FFC, and everyone this year was very actively involved. You made it a joy to chair Community Engagement Committee, and I do also appreciate our senior staff for coming to all the FFC meetings and working alongside our FFC. And I also want to thank Dr. Reich, and even though he's no longer here serving with us, Mr. Hibbs, because they played an active role as well because we're always listening, and we do appreciate you guys, because I know that these recommendations are very thoughtful. They're driven by data, and they're driven by a lot of the rich discussions that you guys had around things you care very much about. So I just want to say thank you. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McMurro. Any other trustee with a question or comment? Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, President Fowler, and Ms. Pettit, and to the whole committee out there. This is one of those great committees that we have that really gives key stakeholders an important say in kind of the future of this district and help us as trustees understand the vision and values of our community members from a budgetary standpoint, what's important to them. And it's been invaluable. I know several members up here have served on the committee. I was firmly chair, yes. But I've got to say, I really appreciate the recommendations you guys brought forth this year. The first recommendation on safety and stability, I like that when you looked at the possible ways to address, you reiterate what is board policy for us is to pay our teachers competitively. And that's important now more than ever. And so I appreciate you guys looking at that. And then, kind of, I had a question related to that. On your slide on possible ways to address, what, on your third bullet point, you, well, number one, you look at paying competitively, but you looked at ways to prioritize retention by creating incentives for teachers after five years being with the district. Why did you choose that cutoff, and what ways other than compensation or just dollars did you look at, or was it primarily just dollars?
For that one specifically, it was just dollars. It was trying to keep their salaries competitive so they didn't hop districts that could start off paying them more.
Great. And then, next, you looked at attendance, and I appreciate you guys for pointing out that we actually don't get paid on enrollment. We get paid on attendance. And during the COVID year, if we wouldn't have had Hold Harmless, a lot of districts would have been in dire financial strait because kids weren't coming to school. And we're not quite back where we, our norm was, we're close, getting close. But I appreciate the fact that you guys recognize that. You point that out, and I like the importance on always focusing on ways to increase attendance. And so going back, and then finally, we are doing a lot of great things in this district, and it keeps surprising me when I'm out in the community that folks still don't know about our great fine arts complex and some of the things that we're doing, and some of the amazing programs that we have at our CTC Center, and just the wide variety of choice parents have within this district for their children. So I'm all for getting the biggest megaphone we have and making sure that our community knows about all those great things, and all the great things that our students are doing in terms of achievement. So I appreciate that. So having said that, again, thanks for all the hard work. These are three solid recommendations, and we appreciate the time you guys did put in, and these are going to dovetail nicely when we get into budget season in the next coming meetings, and will, and they'll be taken seriously. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Thank you so much, Ms. Pettit, and your group that are here this evening for all the many, many hours that we know you all have put in with your thoughtful discussions, and we do appreciate this, and we will definitely look at your recommendations and see where we can go from there. But I know you spent a lot of time working on this, and please know that you're all very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you again.
When did that pop on?
Thank you, President Fowler. Sorry, Ms. Pettit, can't leave just yet.
It's okay.
I reiterate, thank you for the work, for leading this, and for the entire committee investing the time and attention coming up with the recommendations. I have a couple of questions. You know, first off, with any committee that we appoint, we are so all ears on what those recommendations are. Doesn't necessarily mean we'll do them, or any one or all, but my tenure on this board shows that we pay great attention and that, in fact, we do pretty much implement just about every single recommendation, take that into an account as we govern. So I don't think this is going to be any different. They're very sound. I did have a couple of questions on some specifics. So on the, under the safety and stability, I was curious, for security specifically, or I should say safety specifically, the fourth bullet says, "Consider providing additional security to help students and staff feel and be safer." Can you articulate on what kind of discussion was that? What did that look like? Was it literally additional security guards at every campus, or what was that specifically?
It was around looking at the number we have now, and we didn't have the data behind our security guards, but we know that it kind of varied from campus to campus, maybe, and how it was used. And we wondered if there was opportunity to increase it, but we didn't know if that was already being looked at, given the current climate. But we just wanted that to be mentioned, that additional security guards.
But it was specific to security guards, not hardening of facilities or anything like that, because I think we've done a pretty good job there through our own programs. Thank you, community, for supporting those. Okay. And I am sure as Ms. Moss and team continue refining and working on the budget, they're going to be looking at those things on what is the best value for us, because obviously, safety is always number one. We can't do anything if we don't have achievement of real safety, the feeling of safety. So under attendance, possible ways to address, you have engage community organizations and businesses for school partnerships. As I know you're aware, and I would hope that the committee was briefed and aware, we've got a ton of partnerships, a ton of things. It's an amazing blessing that we have in this community to have so many different groups, whether it's from the business community, faith-based community, et cetera, et cetera. Were there any specifics discussed on articulating what they, those organizations might be able to do so that we can inform our staff to engage with them in a different approach than we're currently doing?
For the first steps, we were mainly thinking just getting prizes, things that they could give away to students to reward attendance. And a lot of those just come from making those local relationships to the independent restaurant down the street. It may not be something that the district has a relationship with. But then, as we talked more about it, there is the vision that it could be a long-term partnership where they help the school with many other things beyond just prizes and stuff. They could build partnerships to help support the teachers, because we have a lot of schools, you know, that don't have the active PTAs and stuff, and so they could be another way to help build that community and love on the staff and the teachers.
Well, that's good. And I think love on teachers is great. Love on the students is great, too. Maybe that is a different avenue. I think we have some of that, but maybe we can articulate that a bit further to develop those relationships from people outside the district with them in the community, because that's always a thing that we feel in the district, that the teachers and all the staff pour their hearts and souls into these kids for the number of hours they have each day, then they go back into the home environment where they're not necessarily supported in the same way. And every day, it's like one step forward, two steps backwards kind of thing. So maybe with community partners, maybe there's something that can happen there, and that wouldn't necessarily be a significant budgetary impact as well. So I'm very interested in that. And under the marketing, and I'm sure Ms. Foster was loving hearing all that. She's like, yes, yes, more. Yes, we've got to do more. It is so true. No matter what we do, there's always, you think everybody knows, and no, it's just, it's what it is. So the, do you have, or did the committee discuss any specific ideas, like on the second bullet, highlight our competitive salary to attract, retain, create pride among current employees? Any ideas specifically regarding that one?
It was along the lines of maybe putting out something with actual data to show where we rank among other, like, districts, so they can see that, I mean, we think some teachers know, but there may not be a general awareness. So if it's out there, they might have, you know, that sense of pride if they're like, oh, hey, we're in, you know, the top three versus where they might think we are.
That's interesting, because we do have a table that has that data that we, the district produces every day, or every year. UEA has a very similar version. I'm under the assumption that all staff gets that. I don't know. Dr. Cavassos, is that something that is put out there?
It is common knowledge among our staff where they rank. It's a succinct way I can say they pay attention. Absolutely.
They pay attention. Okay. Well, that's, well, that's great. And I think in all of these recommendations, you've hit, as Dr. Work said when he first came to this district, the big rocks, the big pieces. It's really important. And I know, I shouldn't say I know, but I would hope that Ms. Moss and team would look at some data to assess the impact of some of these things now that we're going into budget. I'm sure that's part of the process, because we, as somebody said earlier, one of our speakers, we have finite resources. We have to figure the best way to implement that. So going into this budget cycle, this is very timely. So I appreciate that. I appreciate your work, and I appreciate you individually. I've seen you out today at other things, and I know it's been a very busy day as a parent and at the end of the year, as everybody is. So thank you for continuing this long day, and I know it's not over for you. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Pettit. I like your idea of the community being a partner and businesses being a partner. And as we well know, in our Rotary Group, we've adopted Webb Elementary, and I think that's been a beautiful partnership. And I would like to see other businesses and different organizations maybe adopt a school in kind of the same way that our Rotary Group does. I think that would be very beneficial for all.
I do, too.
So thank you so much, and thank you to your committee. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
We will now have a district financial update, the 2023-2024 preliminary budget update. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler, and this evening, we bring this financial update presentation, this very riveting, exciting presentation that our finance division will do, but it will also include other members. do, but it will also include other members if, if we get to that point. But I think it's important to note at this point that there, and I'm sure Ms. Moss would, would agree, that there is a lot that goes into what ultimately gets summarized in some slides. And this work has started in the early spring with departments and campuses and the finance team and the budget team, and, and so we don't take that lightly. I mean, I know the hours and hours, and then above that, that is spent just to get to this point. We have very large, complicated budget and a lot of state regulations and things that have to be taken into consideration, so I want to thank ahead of time the finance division that by Ms. Moss for this work. So with that, Ms. Moss.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos, President Fowler, trustees. Welcome, Ms. Haynes and Ms. Richardson. So as routine, we will bring a financial update to the board tonight. Part of that, as we did in the previous meeting back in April, will be for current year, and I'll start that, that, share that information with you. And then the second half of the presentation will be about the preliminary budget for the 23-24 fiscal year. So as always, I just share the highlights of what's included from the financials in your board packet. I'll highlight that the budget amendment is as of May 2023 and includes the functional changes only. The monthly financial report for March and the monthly investment report is as of March 30th. I want to share out also the general operating forecast for the current year. If you'll look at that first column, the original budget, that was adopted back in June of 2022. That second column is what we've revised and asked the board to amend during, throughout the year. The amendments through April were 12.6 million. We've talked again about reclassifying ESER salaries out of ESER II and ESER III. And again, for our new board members, that's our S Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. Those are federal dollars that the district was given. They're, they go through the state in order for us to respond to, to COVID and the pandemic. The third column there is our projected year end. That estimate is as of April 30th, and we are projecting a $32 million surplus. Of course, we are still, we still have expenditures that we're working on, we're still receiving revenue, but as of April 30th, that's our best estimate right now. And I'll just make a point that we did adopt a deficit budget, and here again, we're projecting that we're going to have a surplus. We've talked about that in, in the past as well, about the swing that we're seeing. We've talked about the work that we're doing in order not to, to see that swing, and when Ms. Martin presents 23-24, you'll see some of the work that we're doing to head in that direction. But right now, we're actually forecasting a $32 million surplus. And in saying that, I'll end with the fourth column, which shows if we didn't have our ESER dollars and, and different things, we would actually have a deficit budget of about $5.1 million. And of course, those are estimates, they are subject to change, we still have some encumbrances, we still may, before June 30th, have some expenditures that were, you know, we were not aware of, that we might spend, so that number could fluctuate. And again, as I've shared before, this just gives you a picture, a detailed picture of the ESER expenditures, 4.6 in indirect costs, 14.8 was the ESER II supplant, and 17.6 are general operating expenditures that we've reclassified to ESER, and as well as a reclassification for our ERP that we're anticipating, for a total of $38 million impacted. And again, I'll share the ESER update. If you'll look at the column, "Amount remaining," for ESER III, we've got $73.7 million remaining in those funds as of April 30th. ESER II, we have $145,000 remaining. We should finish that grant off during the month of May, so the next month, when we report it out to you, we should see, have all those funds expended. That grant period does end September 30th of, of 2023. And then we just shared out the number of positions and the budgetary impact of those positions that are in ESER. And I wanted to take, give you just a highlight of the other funds as well that are approved by the board. Our debt service, we're projecting a $10.6 million surplus there. Our capital projects fund, the changes in that fund, you know, it's a little different. We're showing $91.1 million change. The child nutrition fund, we're anticipating a $1.1 million surplus in that fund. And as we reported to the board back in April, we did have a cash redemption of some school, school bonds, the Series 2014. We made that payment on May the 10th of $4.7 million. 4.6 of that was principal, and 45,000 was accrued interest for savings on future interest payments for our taxpayers of $1.6 million. And now I'm going to switch over to the 2024 fiscal year budget, and I'm going to let Ms. Martin come, but as Dr. Cavassos said, we come up here and we tell the board all this information, but there are a lot of people working in the background that, you know, are not recognized. Ms. Martin and her team, she has an executive director, I think Bridget Lewis is, is with us tonight, but we also have a, a budget director, Sheena, Sheena Jocelyn, who comes to the board members as well. She and her team work, you know, tireless hours, and, you know, we're asking questions all the time, and they're trying to gather that data and answer them for us. But it goes outside of the finance division as well. We work with campuses and departments. We start this work back in December, and you get to hear from me just the, the summary version of it, and Dr. Cavassos gets to hear from me all year long on, on, on the budget. But we have a lot of people who are working in the background, helping us with this work. So I'll let Ms. Martin.
Good evening. Again, so just wanted to give you an update on the budget timeline. The next action items that we have for the board is coming up in June 8th, where we will be taking a, our proposed budget that we would then advertise for a final budget approval and adoption on June 20th. We are waiting on certified taxable values from parent appraisal district in July 25th. We will not get our tax rate that, that's given to us determined by TEA until August, and then we will then adopt the tax rate in September. Just to share with you the budget priorities that, that we had when we're building this preliminary, this 23-24 budget. And then, wanted to share with you that the first is the Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas actually requires that districts, that school boards discuss property values and the funding lag right, around that budget adoption time. So wanted to show you, as shown on this timeline, the dark blue, July 1 through June 20, June 30th, is our, signifies our district's fiscal year. But looking ahead, just what happened recently is we received our parent appraisal district certified property value estimates. Those are the numbers that we are using to come up with this bud, to prepare this budget. But as you can see, we don't get actual final state values that determine state funding until August 2024, which is after the fiscal year. In addition to that, as I mentioned, we will not know until August what our actual maximum compressed tax rate is, which determines the tax rate that we set to, to put on for the levy. So it's, that there is a lag on when we're creating, when we're proposing the budget to when we're collecting taxes, and then to what, what the state determines for state revenue, state aid. And as I shared, we received our April estimates this past, our certified estimates this past April, so you can see that there is a pretty significant taxable value increase here. We are expected to receive an updated estimate in May, and that will be the number that we will be using for the proposed budget that we'll be presenting to you in June. Reviewing the budget assumptions for 23-24, we did make a few changes from what we previously shared last month, and that is regarding the taxable values. We reduced that from a 15% increase to a 12 and a half increase, and because of that reduction in the property value, taxable value increase, that actually affects our tax compression, so we saw less tax compression, and now we are looking at a 7 cent decrease in, in the tax rate for next school year. Another thing that's changed is in last month, we showed you an HB 100 scenario, and that has now been removed. The Senate is not planning on moving on House Bill 100, and so therefore, we're not including any of those changes in this budget. However, pieces of House Bill 100 may make into other bills that are moving forward, but we're not, at this point, don't know what those will be. So. Before we present you our scenarios, just want to remind you that there are a lot, there are some risks involved with some of these assumptions that we are making. Again, we're, we're looking at an enrollment and attendance, that we won't know what those numbers are until we get into the school year in the fall. And in addition, whatever, that attendance rate, as we mentioned earlier, is actually what affects our state aid calculation, so that if we don't, if we have lesser attendance or lesser enrollment, that would, could result in lower state revenue. Also, we know which bills are moving forward, but at the same time, we don't know what will change within those bills that may affect school finance. So some of the items we, right now, they're still talking about is there are still additional exemptions, additional tax rate compression, appraisal caps, all, and all of these are things that affect our taxable values, which, as I mentioned, is, is a big piece of, of the state revenue budget. In addition, we don't, we still don't know what our MNO tax rate is going to be, because that's not determined until August. And, and then finally, we could have our position, our fill rates could be higher than previous years, and that could result in less vacancy savings, among other things that are unforeseen or control of factors that we don't know about. So with that said, right here is a 20, our preliminary budget that we're showing you. The first column is what was shared by Ms. Moss, and as a side-by-side, the fiscal year 24 preliminary budget includes the assumptions that I previously shared, and then any of the proposals submitted, budgets submitted by campuses and departments. As you can see, we are currently looking at a $51.7 million deficit, but we are, we've discussed some strategies before any increases to address this deficit, and know that we would need to be more aggressive on these strategies to consider any general pay increases. And so this is what that preliminary budget is at this moment. I have any questions?
Is there a question? Otherwise, I was going to transition.
Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Fowler. Ms. Moss, Ms. Martin, as always, great work. I know we had a pretty substantial budget update that we looked at last time, and, you know, true to your word, you're continuing to work with what we have in, in getting us to a point where, even though we adopted a sizable, you know, budget deficit last year, we're once again in the position of seeing the swing that we traditionally do of, of ending the year with a surplus. And looking ahead to next year, and I, you know, I think the assumptions here are, are good. I think we're in a position of, of seeing another preliminary budget potentially not accounting for employee increases in, in a deficit mode, but we're also projecting, I think, very conservatively, also building in relief for the taxpayer because of the compression of, and now we're estimating almost seven and a half cents of a reduction, you know, so almost 7%. You know, this is the time of year when we talk about what we would like to do for our staff, and we have, in the finance committee, been reviewing with you the options that we have to continue to make good on our commitments to our staff, to continue to treat them as the professionals they are and to remain competitive in this, this area. So what I personally would like to see, and I, and I, I think that there's a solid plan that you can put together and have been working on to get us there, I would like to see us continue to maintain our compensation rate around, and the increase around 4%, and I, I think that's doable, and I know we're looking at the budget deficit here, but I'm also looking at, you know, we're running that deficit before vacancy savings and before potentially using ESER funds to supplant, which we know we have to spend somewhere in the neighborhood of almost $74 now by next September. And we also know that there's maybe going to be some vacancies that go unfilled, because those are term positions, and, and potentially, some of those folks are not going to want term positions on ESER funding if they're for one year or less. So I think there's a, a way to get there, and so I, I would like to see the, the, you know, district administration's plan for, assuming we do a 4% increase in compensation, what that would look like and where that would actually put us, because I think from looking at this, this is always good to see where we're at, but we know that y'all have some strategies and, and whatnot to get us to a place where we can be fiscally responsible at the same time, do well by our staff. And so if there's administration information on that, I'd enjoy seeing that.
Yeah, we have modeled that, and just to, as Ms. Moss said, there are some, and Ms. Martin said, there are some tools and strategies that we can apply to address that, and we call it a funding plan for remaining competitive in this environment. So if you want to project that, we can go to that.
Yes, and I will share that slide with you. When we partner with TASB every year, they give us recommendations, they run different models. I think this year, they ran a 1%, a 3%, and a 4%. So our work is to also run the numbers to see what that costs, and we can share that 4% with you. I would like to say, we talked about balancing the budget, that's a, a goal that we have. We talked about the swing and trying to eliminate that from, you know, from the beginning at the big, when we adopt the budget. And so that $51 million that we say, or we, are sharing with you tonight is with no percent increase in it. But we have strategies, and we've been working on things to try to get that budget balanced. We know that we have ESER dollars, we know we won't always have ESER dollars, but part of our, our strategy is to say, we have those dollars now, let's utilize those dollars. That's why we're seeing, you know, actually, the surpluses that, that we did or that we're estimating for the end of this fiscal year. But we can use those dollars to balance this budget as well, we've looked at that. We've also looked at and talked with the superintendent about some other strategies where, when we look at what we actually have in the budget now, there can still be some reductions there. It's going to take a lot of work to get there, but, you know, with our student enrollment declining, continuing to decline, and revenue is not increasing, we have to start looking at strategies like that to try to keep our budget balanced, so that not only we can add compensation for this year, but we can have, you know, funding to add compensation for years ahead. So how can we sustain what we actually add, add today? And I don't know if Frank has that slide, if you can put that one up. So based on what we calculated for a 4% increase, you'll notice the first slide that we have there is, of course, our budget, and what we're saying, we may, may end at that $32 million. What I will say about that $32 million also, I don't think I said it earlier, is that about $11 million of that is for our ERP, it will come out, so all of that won't go into general, in our, into our general fund. Part of it will go into capital outlay to set aside for the ERP that we're planning. The second column, Scenario 1, is the $51 million that Ms. Martin shared with you, that's where we ended. No increase or, or anything, that's where the budget would, what the budget would look like. The next column is, okay, if we add a 4% increase to, to the budget, we would have a $73.6 million deficit. And then the column on the far right is where we've done our work, and we said, okay, we can look at ESER funding, it would be a total of $25 million for ESER funding. And we talk about the swing, and we've looked in the past over what causes that swing, and we know that the big, the big portion of that are our vacancies. This year, we're, we're seeing a larger amount of vacancies than we've seen in the last couple of years, that's in that first column, that $42 million. Typically, we see about a $30 million vacancy, so that's where you'll see in the far right-hand corner that we're saying, if, at the beginning of the budget, we say, we know that we can, we're probably, or more than likely, not going to use those vacancies, or we're not going to hire those positions, we can use that $30 million to balance the budget. Instead of waiting to the end of the year... Instead of waiting to the end of the year, having the swing there, and it's still there anyway, so we use it to, to balance the budget. And the other item is, in red, the $86 million that you see there. If you look at the column on the far left, the budget, we budgeted last year $80 million for campus and department expenditures. The next column is what they're requesting this year, $96 million. We're saying we can reduce that amount to $86 million. But all those, those three things is what it's going to take for us to balance the budget. And some people will say that $8.6 million is not balanced, is still a deficit, right? When you're talking about a almost $600 million, million-dollar budget, that is pretty much balanced. I will tell you that Ms. Martin and myself would like to see that number reduced a little bit more. If we could get it down to another $3 million, to where we're at 5.5 million or so, that is our comfort level, but that does include a 4% increase, and that includes us doing the work that we need to do to get it there.
And Ms. Moss, if we do get it down, and even if it's the 8.6 or it's something closer to 5, what do you project our fund balance would be towards the end of next year? Against, so we would be sort of comparing that deficit against what, what we have in sort of our surplus fund?
Well, if you look at '22, '23, and what we're projecting to put into the fund balance, we're going to add $20 million to it. I have a comfort level there. I really, you know, watch the fund balance and what we're putting into it. We still have some bonds out there that we've got to sell. We still have some rating agencies that we have to talk to. So we still need to be able to say, hey, we're, we're, you know, we're still continuing, as our expenses climb, so does our fund balance. So we're looking at that as well. So 20 million there is going to go into fund balance.
Okay. I, I don't have anything else on, on this. I would, I, I, I think this is a really responsible plan to move forward. It moves some of the assumptions that we don't really see realized historically to until this time of year on the front end. And I think that's something that, that we have been, as a board, you know, asking for, for a while to, to reduce that swing. So the, you know, it doesn't, we're not in the position of, of adopting, you know, what is that, eight-figure deficits and then end up with a eight-figure surplus. But this sounds really responsible, especially against the backdrop of ESAR. And I know that we have been trying very hard and doing a good job of, of looking at our staffing in relation to our enrollment decline and, and other, other matters. I, I would only editorialize besides this, that I think it's an absolute travesty that the state started this legislative cycle, you know, sort of proclaiming how much money, how many tens of billions of dollars are in the rainy day fund and what they're going to do for teachers and education, knowing that we, like everyone else, but like we have had to deal with large increases in inflation, and we've still got to do right by our employees. And the promise to do right by us has, you know, started as, it was recently HB 100, and I think it only had a 1.4% increase in the basic allotment. And now, very disappointed to hear that, that there may be none. When we started the session, hopeful that, that some of the things that needed to be fixed from HB 3 several cycles ago would be fixed and that we would get some additional relief because of inflation and, and COVID. But we're not the state, and we're just always shouting to the void on that one. So.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Dr. Raj.
Thank you, President Fowler. Thank you, Ms. Moss. This is very interesting. I just, a couple of clarifications. So this, this far-right column, that accounts for, and is included in the, the budget, that over $6 million of recapture, correct?
That is correct. If you'll look on that line, like right under the 86 million.
Oh, there it is, right there.
It's $6.1 million that we are budgeting for recapture. That is a significant increase over this current year. We have not been identified as recaptured by TEA. We will likely get that letter in July. We are already recapturing this year, and we have $1.7 million budgeted for recapturing this year. It's not something that we want to do as a district, it's something that we have to do and we're required to do.
Right, yeah. I mean, that, that's, that, that's the thing. There's, there's not much we can do as far as avoiding that. It's kind of a state thing. And that was actually, to Mr. Chapa's point, another thing that was perhaps going to be adjusted and accommodated for this legislative session, because it's not just our district that is not truly a property wealthy district. It was going to be many districts, and there are many districts that are in the same situation. And it, it's unfortunate, it really is. So, and this also does include, with that said, a, a seven-cent reduction in the tax rate.
Yes.
So I guess one question that I have, and I'll just say, I don't have any issue. If we can do a 4%, it's just amazing, honestly. We, we've been able to do that the past few years. We are in an ultra-competitive environment right now. Our, our table that, that we put together in all the years and pay bands, every year that's challenged. We kind of set the precedent, and now we're, we're just going to have to keep making good on that. The, the costs are, are nuts for everybody. So the, the, the thing that I'm wondering, so with this 4%, as far as that would keep us, or, right now, we're basically at the top in, in all the bands. And this 4% pretty much does that. The reason I'm saying that is, in previous years, we, we've wanted to do it in advance, but we haven't necessarily put it out there because we were hopeful that, you know, by doing it, putting it out there too early, then we're increasing that inflation with other districts, saying, oh, well, Arlington's doing that, so we're going to do this too. And we lose our competitive advantage. And districts are already posting for that very reason right now, all over the place. And it's, if, right now, we're at the end of school, we're at the time where, for those teachers that haven't officially announced their thinking, and this might be that, that one trigger, that lever to say, I'm going to stay here, this is really cool. So I think it's, it's really advantageous for us to have this discussion right now. And I, I would even be prepared to make a motion that we have this put into the budget. But I don't know if I'm out of turn on that. And obviously, I haven't, Mr. Chapa spoke, I've spoken. I'd like to hear the pulse of, of the group.
Thank you, President Fowler, and thank you, Dr. Raj. I, too, would be interested in looking at how my colleagues feel about a 4% raise. I, you know, FFC just gave a recommendation that we've got to stay competitive. I agree with that, that's our board policy. This is a highly competitive environment, but it's not just teachers, it's also our auxiliary personnel. We're having trouble with security guards and cafeteria workers, bus drivers, et cetera. Do you, and part of the plan that you shared with us in our Finance Committee, you shared a comprehensive recommendation for compensation. Are you guys prepared to share with the full board?
Yeah, so thank you, Mr. Will Banks, that, that is part of this. Yes, the 4%, that's the big item, obviously, and it's 4% to midpoint because that helps more employees that way. But it is a total, what we discussed with the Finance Committee. So we are prepared to do the highlights of that. I think it is important because it does show the competitive compensation in other areas, including teachers. So I'll ask Holly to come up, and if you want to transition to that few slides that include the highlights, we'd be happy to do that.
If, if I could just clarify, clarify something. I know Mr. Will Banks mentioned that we've had trouble with bus drivers and custodians. And I think what he probably meant trouble with is keeping them employed because of the, the pay rate that we've been doing in the market. And so I wanted to kind of clarify what that trouble was.
Yeah, they're not rowdy at all. We love our bus drivers and cafeteria workers.
Yes, we do.
So thanks for that clarification.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks.
All right, so we have Holly Stenbauer, who is our Director of Compensation and Benefits. And before she starts, she, she has done an enormous amount of work with TASB, our consultants, our own analysis, analysis with other districts, to get us to this point. And so I want to thank you on that. So if you would hit the highlights, go for it.
Thank you, thank you, President Fowler, thank you, Board of Trustees, thank you, Dr. Gavazos, for having me here today. And so I'm going to discuss with you our recommendation in regards to the 4% pay increase that we were, you guys were just discussing. And so the next slide. So here's some highlights of this recommendation. This would be a 4% general pay increase at the market teacher salary totaling $2,600 for all teachers at the teacher pay scale. This is at the market teacher salary, I want to point that out. This would be a 4% general pay increase at the midpoint of the pay grade for all other positions. This would make our starting teacher salary be $62,500 for a first-year teacher. We're also recommending that all of our starting salaries be raised to a minimum of $15 an hour. After the general pay increase is applied, employees that are below the market may also be eligible for an additional equity adjustment. We're also recommending an increased daily rate of pay for our bridge substitutes from, from 165 a day to 225 per day. We're also recommending some increases to athletic stipends, bilingual stipends, and special education stipends. In addition to these, you were referring to our auxiliary positions, so I want to highlight those. These are some of our very hard-to-fill positions, and we really need to look at reclassifying these. Our bus attendant, our custodian, and our food service specialist from an auxiliary 1, which is currently $13.25 an hour, to an auxiliary 2 at $16 per hour. Our campus security officer from an auxiliary 3 at $15.55 per hour, to an auxiliary 4 at $18 per hour. Our dispatcher security and security corporal from an auxiliary 4 at $16.48 an hour, to auxiliary 5 at $19.62 per hour. Our security sergeant from an auxiliary 5 at $18.25 an hour, to an auxiliary 6 at $21.63 an hour. Our bus driver and our lead food service warehouse from an auxiliary 6 at $20.26 per hour, to an auxiliary 7 at $24.06 per hour. And last, our foreman warehouse from an auxiliary 6 at $22.69 per hour, to an auxiliary 8 at $29.64 per hour. Our last recommendation is to increase our substitute pay. Currently, our non-degreed substitutes are at $100 a day, and the recommendation is to 120. And this is all the way up to our retired, degreed, and certified substitutes, from $125 a day to $165 a day. We also offer an 11-day or more consecutive assignment. This is for substitutes who pick up more than 11 days in a row, and, and, and it could be in any different campus in the district. And so this incentivizes them to continue to sub and to continue to pick up assignments. We currently offer these incentives for our non-degreed and our degreed substitutes. We would like to recommend, including our degreed and certified, and especially our retired, degreed, and certified, to incentivize retired, degreed, and certified subs around the DFW area to come and substitute with Arlington ISD. That's the last of our recommendations.
And I want to make sure we, we clarify that the slide you saw with all of the adjustments and the, trying to balance that budget and all that includes all of this, not just the 4%. So that's an important, I think, clarification. We're not adding to that other slide, we're, it represents that other slide. So thank you, Holly.
Thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Chapa.
No, I, I don't have any questions. I just wanted to say, it's great to see this level of detail because these are things that we have been, in addition to wanting to remain competitive on the teacher professional side, wanting to do right by our hourly employees, too. And it's been a goal, I think, many years, if we've been working steadily towards at least getting our minimum pay to $15 an hour. And it looks like now, we're not only going to do that, we're going to exceed that. And this also addresses some of the problem areas where we've had some issues with, with some recruitment, and, and hopefully that, that fixes this. And these are substantial. I'm so glad to see our custodians and food service workers getting moved from aux 1 to aux 2. They're so valuable to what happens on our campuses, and we really can't function without them. And so I'm really glad to see that, that that move has finally been made, and we've been working on it steadily. And thank you for putting this together.
Thank you very much.
Ms. McMorrow.
Thank you, President Fowler. I do want to echo what's already been said by several of us. And, you know, we, we mentioned this about this time last year, and I, I do want to reiterate it again this year. We, we really strive to stay competitive and, and keep up with paying our staff adequately. And it's not just to stay competitive, it is because this is what our teachers and staff absolutely deserve. And I know that everyone in this dais would agree. And if there's no further discussion, I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
Okay. I move to approve the administration's proposal for the 2324 compensation package as presented, which includes, but is not limited to, a pay increase of 4% of market median for employees assigned to the AISD teacher salary schedule, a starting teacher pay rate of $62,500, and an increase of 4% of the 202324 pay grade midpoint for eligible employees paid on AISD salary schedules other than the AISD teacher salary schedule. And targeted adjustments were appropriate to achieve market competitiveness and move staff members closer to the midpoint of their pay grade.
Thank you, Ms. McMorrow. We have a motion for Ms. McMorrow. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. I have a motion for Ms. McMorrow, and a second from Mr. Chapa. Please vote. Do you have a comment? You hit it, your name's gone. There you go.
I'm, I just want to say, it's, it's refreshing to have this united front. It really is. Proud of everybody working at this. Really thank you, Darla Karla Finance Team, our Finance Committee on the board. I know you've, you've been looking at this every which way from Sunday. So I, I think it's really important that we, we move forward with this. It sounds like it's not going to be an issue. I, I just want to say that we are still at the very beginning of our budget process. There was that 8-point-something that's still hanging there as a deficit. I really appreciate the efforts that you've done to tamp that down and squeeze it. If there's any squeeze left. Blood from a turnip, I mean, come on. But, and I also know there's ways that, that we can do that with additional ESAR allocations, that kind of thing, not necessarily want that to be our first course of action. But I would be interested in other opportunities to, to look at that and discuss that as we really get into this in, in June, so that we can truly have it as a balance. It's just so important for our community to understand, the past several years, people have not received us passing a deficit budget well, even with the full explanation that we know it's going to swing. We know it's going to come back. And I understand that because I'm a business guy, and I don't know that it would be really easy for me to approve something with, with my board looking at me going, okay, so how is this going to fly? That's a little bit different in public education and governmental financing. But this definitely makes it a lot easier because we're essentially doing the exact same thing as what we do every year, we're just doing it on this front end. And I think that just provides a, a level of clarity. So thank you so much for your efforts in doing that. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Raj. Mr. Will Banks.
Thank you, President Fowler. And I, too, am grateful for the detail and thought that the staff put in, in really helping those auxiliary, the comments Mr. Chapa made and Dr. Raj. Those auxiliary personnel are critical to the functioning of our campuses and that learning. continues on the campus. And I think 4% is the right amount. It is early in the cycle, but we need to be sure to retain and send a strong message to teachers from other districts that are now looking, and our existing staff that we want to continue to pay, they're worth it. And the fact that we're able to get all of that and come within 1.4333 of our overall budget, which is close to what I would say is a balanced budget. If we can, you know, I think there's some room, as Dr. Raj said, to take that 8.6 down to closer to $6 million within that 1%. And that would make me happy to see us come with a balanced budget within under 1% of our total expenditures. I think that would send a strong message to our community that we're serious about this, but we're still serious about attracting the best talent here in AISD. So thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. So we have a motion, right?
A second.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, I call it, see if there's any more discussion.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion for Ms. McMorrow and a second from Mr. Chapa. Please vote. Thank you very much. We'll now move to action, item B, considering the 2023-2024 Student Code of Conduct.
Thank you, President Fowler. And this evening, we bring for discussion action, code of conduct revisions, edits. We have a committee that does work with our code of conduct. We also have a board committee that works with our code of conduct. So it's gone through, I don't know, at least two committees, and several different edits. And Dr. Hill will present the final draft and see if there's questions, and we'll move on. Dr. Hill?
Thank you, President Fowler, Superintendent, and Board. Get the follow budget, so we'll see where it goes. Again, to present the revisions to the Student Code of Conduct or recommended revisions, again, we look at this through the lens of Board Policy AE Local, which basically is the core beliefs of the Board, is that the school environment definitely impacts the achievement. And we've heard that through FFC earlier as well. And so this process, again, starts with campus administration, central administrators, teachers, parents, and students met this spring to kind of review some data and then to look at some of the proposed changes for the code of conduct. This document was also reviewed by all of the departments from transportation to security to special ed and all. They all had their review of their different areas in the document. Some of the recommended changes, we're talking about non-eligible school bus riders requesting to be able to ride the bus when there's space available. Talked about including ammunition and bullets in the group for misbehaviors because we've seen a little increase in that in some of our campuses. We removed some language that addresses hairstyles, and then we added restorative practices to the toolkit of supportive interventions for students. Also, we recommend some special education eligibility and evaluation services, clarifying for parents how you can and how you should go about requesting sped evaluations. Clarity of supports for drug and alcohol counseling options for students that are dealing with that issue, and clarity in communicating the threat assessment protocol to make sure that when students go through this threat assessment, how we communicate and who we communicate to, to make sure that we're thorough in that. And there's some other considerations that were brought forward through the committee, but through review of administration and the other committees, we were not bringing those forward at this time, things like, I didn't have them written down here somewhere, SEL and other non-material changes. Want to be clear that we all know we're in the middle of a session, and they're legislative session in Austin, and there could be some changes that come out of that that would impact this document. And we constantly monitor that and will be keeping you up to date if there are any changes. And so, again, as mentioned earlier, the review process has been reviewed by central administration. Our legal office has looked at it, the Board Governance Committee, and now we're here tonight to present it to you all. That being said, we recommend the Board approve the changes to the 2023-23-24 Code of Conduct as presented, and we'll take any discussion or questions that you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. Do we have any questions or comments? Dr. Raj?
Thank you, President Fowler. Thank you, Dr. Hill, for the information and the work. And to the Governance Committee, thank you for doing a good job in going through these things. I just have a couple of questions and maybe some wordsmithing recommendations to consider. The first question, and I'm looking at the red line summary comparison, that was the easiest thing for me to do. And this can come from you, Dr. Hill, or from somebody on the committee. There's a, in addition, on the threat assessment, the parents guardians of students in the threat assessment protocol will be notified before the assessment is initiated. Can you tell me, is, what does that look like balanced against what we currently have? What would be the difference there? So if, whatever that threat assessment protocol is, I don't know if that would be a gun or whatever it is, what do we do now and how does this clarification help make it better?
So I think what we do now is we do notify, we're just putting it in the document that we do notify. And again, I wanted to be clear that in the document, that if, that who, which parents we're talking to. So if a parent of child A is in the protocol, we're not going to notify the whole campus. We're going to notify the parents of that student. So it's providing that clarity.
Okay. And is that going to be easy from an administering standpoint to be able to do that? I just ask because I know it's an issue now with people saying they have or have not been notified. From an administrating or administration of this, implementation of this, what does that look like to be able to isolate down to, these are the students, these are the families that we notify only versus the entirety of the campus? It seems like that would be a little bit difficult to orchestrate.
Well, and I think, to your point, and I think I know where the issue may be, if there is something that's going on on the campus that everyone needs to be notified about, then we would send that notification out, A, we received this threat at this campus, and we're looking into it. That's the shout above the bow to everybody. Specifically, if it's these two kids or these 10 kids are involved specifically in the threat assessment protocol, then we would make specific notifications to those parents, letting them know, you're in this protocol, here are the steps that we're going, here's how long it may take, here are some of the things that may come out of this. And so I think that's the specificity of the students who are actually in the protocol versus there is a threat to this campus and we're just informing everybody.
Okay. Well, I could see where that, I mean, obviously, from a clarity standpoint, that that seems to be a better approach. I'm forecasting the potential of, you have those isolated students, but then they talk, their families talk, and then you have these other families going, "I wasn't notified." So how do you mitigate that?
Well, I think it's...
And I'm sorry, I mean, essentially, that's where we're at now in a lot of situations. I think this is a much healthier approach to it. It's just that, I guess I would say, just be prepared, it might not eliminate what you're currently experiencing from an administration standpoint.
Absolutely.
But I appreciate, and I absolutely support the addition there. Let's see. The only other thing that I have is a, it's wordsmithing. It was on the special education referrals part. And I don't know, do you have the red line? Does everybody have the red line version? I can kind of go through it? Okay. And basically, all I'm, there's no substantive change whatsoever, just it seems to clean it up and make it a little bit more of a better flow for parents or families that might be reading this. And it's specifically regarding, you know, this is number eight in the summary comparison, eight of, I guess, nine. It's number eight. So in the red line version, basically, this discusses when parents can request an evaluation for special ed services. And there's different spots throughout here where it talks about in writing versus verbal because verbal is certainly a parent's right, if that's what they choose. But what I've, what I suggest is, so the first mention of, that the request can be made verbally is, it's the fifth line down, beginning with, I think, what is really that probably third sentence. And it says, "A request for special ed evaluation may be made verbally." Does everybody see that? So what I'm looking at and proposing is that we strike that and basically move that down to the, after this sentence that ends with, "along with a copy of the notice of procedural safeguards," because then we start talking about verbal request doesn't require yada yada again. So at that point is where we put that sentence in there. A parent may request an initial valuation verbally, however, and then go on with the rest, that it does not require this, that, and the other. And that's it.
Yeah, that's no problem.
And then the, I just had a question. I wanted to confirm that we say, or use the term LEA. I want to make sure that LEA is actually included in the definitions in the Student Code of Conduct, so that, and if it's not, that we definitely need to include it in there.
I will confirm that it is. I believe it is, but I confirm. You know, we, as we call it alphabet soup, we should clarify that for a lot of people.
And I apologize. I should have just looked at that beforehand, but I didn't have a chance to verify that it was there. So I just want to make sure it is. And that's it. So I know this is discussion action. So that's all I have, though, on the discussion part.
Mr. Will Banks?
There's no other discussion. I'd move approval of the changes as recommended, inclusive of the one change Dr. Raj made on number eight.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Do we have a second? A second. A second for Ms. McMorrow. Please vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. We now move to action, item C, consider the 2023-2024 Board of Trustees' meeting calendar.
Thank you, President Fowler. And this evening, we bring, for your consideration and for your preparation and planning, all the exciting events for next year, we bring the board, the board meeting calendar for next year as a discussion. I know it's always the most exciting thing. And so we bring it, you've had it, we've highlighted the potential dates following the same pattern, but we bring it so that the board can have that consideration. And if any adjustments due to calendars, we're open to taking those. And then we can either make those adjustments now, and you all can vote on it, or we can bring it back.
Thank you, President Fowler. So this is a normal, normal part of our process. I'm happy to be able to have it out there so that everybody can get their budget, their popcorn, and their nights to watch these auspicious affairs appear. In all seriousness, though, the March 7th meeting date, that occurs during our open house weeks, that's always on what seems to be elementary open house night, has been forever. And some years, it doesn't necessarily line up to be able to shift it. I don't think it's a positive thing for anybody, whether it's us as trustees. We're not able to get out in the community for staff members, they're not able to tune in and be engaged with what's happening at the board meeting because they have open house. And for senior staff, et cetera. So I've came up with just a tweak. And so my proposal is moving three meeting dates, two in February and that March 7th. So it doesn't, I don't think, cause any change, bless you, in putting an extra burden on administration and preparations for board meetings or conducting business, the going concern of the district, et cetera. So my, what I'm proposing is, the calendar is stated with the adjustment of moving the February 1st and 15th meetings to February 8th and 22nd, and then moving that March 7th meeting to March 21st. And that gives, I think, a lot more opportunity for everybody to be fully engaged in every aspect of our district.
Thank you, Dr. Raj. I think those are important changes, and I appreciate you bringing those to the Board's attention. I think this will work out much better for everyone concerned. Do I have a motion to approve the Board of Trustees' meeting calendar? Ms. Haynes?
Yeah. Is it on? All right. Thank you, President Fowler. I move to approve the 2023-2024 Board of Trustees' meeting calendar with the revision of moving February 1st and 15th meeting to February 8th and 22nd, and moving the March 7th meeting to the 21st of March.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. I have a motion for Ms. Haynes. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Dr., is that Raj? Dr. Raj? Couldn't tell if it was you or David. I was looking at him. Thank you, Dr. Will Banks. So we have a motion for Ms. Haynes and a second from Dr. Raj. Please vote. Scare me there, permit, Mr. Will Banks? The vote carries in the affirmative. Thank you so much. We will now address the consent agenda items, which consist of routine items grouped together for approval as one item. Unless removed from the consent agenda, these items will be acted on at one time with no discussion. Trustees, are there any requests for items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda for further discussion? Seeing none, is there a motion to accept the agenda? I have a motion for Ms. McMorrow. Do I have a second?
I second.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Motion carries in the affirmative. Thank you. There's always one. Now, we come to our open forum for non-agenda items. Ms. Benjamin, do we have any requesters registered to vote to address the board regarding non-agenda items?
No, ma'am, we do not.
Thank you, Ms. Will, I can't get names right today. Thank you, Ms. Benjamin. We are now ready for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Fowler. And just a couple of items that will come up on the screen here about things happening in our district. It's officially our event season in Arlington ISD. We've all been busy with some big events. Last week, we celebrated more than 250 Arlington ISD employees who have 25, 30, 35, and 40 years of service, and as well as those who are retiring this school year. It was great to see so many people dedicated so many years to our district, and I want to thank all of them. You were a student, weren't you, Ms. McMorrow? Is that the story here?
Yes, Foster Elementary, Ms. Williams was one of the teachers 30 years ago, when I was a sixth grader.
Yeah.
Ms. Callahan taught both of my students, my children.
I asked Ms. McMorrow's teacher how she was as a student. And it was, that's exactly right, A-plus, A-plus. All right. Wednesday was a big one for our Professional Development Center, as we honored our star students and their teachers. The luncheon is for the top 2% of seniors in each graduating class, as well as the teacher who most impacted them in the district. We also have our high school counselors, as well as the parents of the star students. At the luncheon, it was great to hear about the students, their plans, why they honor the teacher they honor. they honor, and we know that our future is bright because of how talented our teachers and staff members are and how they dedicate to our students. So congratulations to all the teachers that were honored and our star students. I want to thank Arlington Police Chief Al Jones for taking time out of his schedule to visit with 5th and 6th graders at West Elementary last Friday as part of our initiative of Take 25. The chief spoke to them about the importance of staying safe this summer and answered questions about everything from whether he liked donuts, yeah, that was the, hey, I'm not making this up. This is a real question that came up, or if he's ever been involved in a police chase, and then a lot about safety. So I want to commend West Principal Wendy Baker, because her students were outstanding, well behaved, 5th and 6th graders in May. They were awesome. So congratulations, Ms. Baker, for that. Congratulations to Ashworth Elementary teacher, Danyda Norris, for being honored as a North Texas Honda Dealers with a helpful, helpful hands donation during the Teacher Appreciation Week. I was able to take part of this. We had to surprise her, and she's very difficult to surprise. So Ms. Norris was in the gym with students and her students and all the students there, and, and the, the plan was that I would come and thank the teachers. She didn't know it was for her, and she didn't know it was about Honda and all that. And then she came up, because I asked her to come up, and then the Honda rep surprised her in the gym with $5,000 in school supplies that she can use in her classrooms. She started reviewing the school supplies. She wasn't listening to anything else we said. She was just excited about that. She is, though, two-time Teacher of the Year in our school district. It's another outstanding representation of our teachers. Students at Beben C. Elementary had a great opportunity last week as one site parked its Vision van outside the school and outfitted nearly 60 students with new glasses at no cost to them. The students got another treat inside when the Dallas Wings shared, Star, Dallas Wings Star Diamond Shields shared her vision story with students before, before her and her teammates showed off their basketball skills. We're very fortunate to have community partners. I think we talked about community partners earlier, that, like, companies from one side who help our school. So I want to thank them and thank all their partners, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Do I have trustees with reports? Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, President Fowler. And indeed, Dr. C, we are blessed with a lot of community partners that help out at our schools. And as you know, it is awards season at a lot of our campuses, and a number of civic organizations, like the Daughters of the American Revolution, the Lions Club, the Masonic Lodge here, and Ms. Fowler's and mine's favorite organization, Downtown Rotary, makes it a point to, for all 5th and 6th graders, as well as 8th graders at our middle school, give awards to outstanding students that excel academically and with great leadership and have the spirit of Rotary in terms of putting service above self. So I had the privilege today to attend the newcomers campus at the Ferguson Center, and I'm always amazed when I go to that center with both the venture students and the newcomers, and I had the privilege of giving out two awards to Melissa Gutierrez and Axel Moreno, and just outstanding students who are new to this country and have just done a phenomenal job of mastering English and excelling academically and, and exhibiting those kind of qualities that we look for in the students that we recognize in terms of putting service above self. So I want to shout out to all the teachers who are doing phenomenal, phenomenal work at our newcomers center. Those kids were well behaved and very excited and very appreciative of each and every award they received. The whole campus, I just can't say enough good things about them. So, thank you to the Rotary Club for giving me that privilege, and we are indeed blessed. Dr. C.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Ms. McMurro?
Thank you, President Fowler. I just wanted to give a quick shout out to Martin High School Principal Marlene Roddy and her wonderful team of counselors. Two days ago, at 6:45 a.m., bright and early, they hosted the VIP Awards Breakfast, recognizing 16 students, ranging from freshmen to seniors, 16 students from the whole school nominated by their teachers who have risen above significant challenges in their educational journey and have still achieved great things academically, socially, and at the same time, spreading kindness throughout their school community despite all those challenges. It was a wonderful morning. I love that they recognize the students in that special way, and they even will get a purple cord to wear at graduation that Dr. Cavassos gave each student. So, thank you to the Martin faculty and staff for recognizing these very special students in this awesome way.
Thank you, Ms. McMurro. Mr. Chappa?
Thank you, President Fowler. I also wanted to give a shout out and, and thank you to one of our community partnerships that, on the theme of blessing, bless our teachers so much. There's the Bless the Campus movement with the Council of PTAs. This is going into their sixth year, I believe, and they've served several dozen of our campuses that don't have active PTAs. They go in and put on a teacher appreciation event, get donations and sponsorships from across the community, and are able to provide staff at those campuses with food, drinks, lots of goodies. There were free coupons for Chewy's queso, among other things, and was able to go this year with Tarrant County College trustee, Jeannie DeKind. We visited the Arlington Collegiate Campus. It's a partnership that we have with TCC, our early college high school, and was able to visit that campus. Almost didn't get in. I scanned my badge several times at the outside at TCC, but my badge should have worked, but it, it in fact.
It was hinting to you, Mr. Chappa.
As one student who was waiting for me to go in finally explained, the door wasn't locked. So, I almost kept myself from participating in Bless the Campus, but eventually got inside. But Bless the Campus is one of my favorite events every year. There's a picture there of one of our campuses. Really a great event that continues to grow each year in both the number of campuses served and the amount of goodies given out. So, thank you.
Oh, my gosh, I gotta stop laughing first. Thank you, Mr. Chappa. Dr. Raish?
Let the record show, Mr. Chappa is maybe not a product of AISD. Just kidding. That's funny.
It's that Harvard education.
Yeah, the Bless the Campus thing, I remember when that started and how it started, and look at how it's grown. It's phenomenal. We have a, an amazing community. Thank you for those amazing supporters of PTA folks that originated that idea, are still vested in it. It's wonderful to see that. There's definitely the need. I was just going to comment on a couple other, not necessarily AISD events, but other things that we've had in the community. One was the Travel and Sports Legacy Foundation, which is the 501(c)(3) arm of the CVB here in Arlington, and they had their annual program, awards program, and they, there's a couple of things there. First off, they, they're on the front lines of realizing our, our benefits as far as Arlington ISD, what we provide and our programming for the travel and hospitality industries. And the speaker that they had there was Dr. Nate Hearn. For those that don't know him, he is the reason of Friday Night Lights, the show, the movie. He, he's the guy. What people may not realize is he's actually here in Arlington, which I did not know. Anyway, he gave a, a good talk. I would also say, there he is. Ah, this is, we did not coordinate this. How are you doing that? I, I would also say that, I know he, he won't boast, but Dr. Cavassos did receive the, a legacy award there in appreciation and, and really gratitude for all the work that you've done as the CEO of this district in, in creating those opportunities and the partnerships, and the CVB certainly recognizes that. So, I just want to put that shout out that I know you would not do. And I'm just going through my pictures on my phone here. I don't have a formal report. And this is, we had our first, From the Chamber, the State of Higher Education, and that was, it was great, great things going on and, and continuous collaborations and partnerships with our TCC, as well as UTA, as well as other higher ed, but this was UTA and TCC. And Dr. Cavassos was surprised with a, another award. I guess that's what happens when, when you're retiring, right? You get, you get all these things. And I, I wish I had the time to coordinate it in advance to put it up there, but I've captured, I captured your moment of your looking, going, "Really?" and kind of your shaking your head going, "Man, I can't believe this." But congratulations again, Dr. Cavassos. You do deserve that. And it was great for him to be recognized by so many in, in the community, and it was a great program. The other thing I wanted to mention is I was able to attend the Arlington Heritage Memorial Grounds opening, which, for those that don't know, it is on Pioneer, I believe, just west, no, I'm sorry, just east of Matlock, I think is what that is. Is it Arkansas? Okay. I really encourage everybody to go by there. It is now open. It's an open thing to the public. This started out several years ago as an idea of really some land that was abandoned and kind of neglected. This is Arlington Heritage because we have lots of history that's buried in, in there as a cemetery, and they, through grants and, and working with many organizations, both public, private, they, they were able to dedicate the opening of this. There's stanchions or posts that have QR codes that, that have explanations of the different events or individuals that are in there. For those that aren't familiar, there's several African Americans that are buried there, and at the time, they were buried there, not necessarily because they were from Arlington, but Arlington, at that time in history, was the only location in all of Tarrant County where a black person was able to be buried. It's really quite astounding as far as our history. And I really appreciate and think it's important to acknowledge that history, to embrace it and learn about it. And one of the things that was discussed there is how educationally that's going to be such a great point for us in our school district, to work with our students. So I'm, I'm excited to see what that looks like in the future, but I just wanted to put it out there. It's officially open. It's a beautiful place and space, done really well, and anyway, it was nice to, to be able to be there, and I've got more information if anybody's interested. Let me go through here. I think that might, that might conclude it. Sorry, guys. Yeah, I, I think that, that's it. I know this is an incredibly busy week. It's the last full week of school with students. We close next week. I say shout out to everybody, to all the families. Congratulations on a wonderful year, and have a, a wonderful summer. And to the teachers, thank you. To the staff, thank you for all the work. This year, I think, ends in a much higher level of positivity than we had last year. Maybe this isn't really appropriate to put out there on the dais, but I think we all can agree that last year was the big surprise year. We did not expect it to be the year that it was. While we were hopeful that this year would have been last year. There was just lots of issues with coming out of COVID, and we're really starting to feel that bounce, and I think the families, the community are. And so, congratulations to everybody on a great year and looking forward for those graduating seniors to see them cross the stage here very soon. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Raish. You have been one busy person.
I know, sorry.
You're everywhere. He's all across this whole city. Thank you, Dr. Raish. I do want to mention a couple of things. I'm really excited about two of our Arlington High soccer players. Mikey Laro is first-team all-district, there they are, first-team all-district midfielder from Arlington High School, and he has signed to play soccer at Arlington Baptist University in the fall. His teammate, Ismael Calderon, has also just signed, and he also will be playing soccer in the fall at Arlington Baptist University. So, just happens to be where I work and teach, and so I am so thrilled that we're going to have two Arlington High students there on our soccer team. I also want to mention that Mrs. McKenzie-McCartee, she is a teacher at Lamar High School, and she reached out to me several months ago, and we had met at a, at a dinner, and she said, "I, I need some help, and I want to put on a special ed prom, but I, I don't know all the logistics of it." So she and I worked a little bit together, and they had a special ed prom that was held, there they are, at Lamar High School last Saturday, and the schools that participated were Sagan, Bowie, Lamar, and Sam Houston. They had over 50 students and their families that attended this event, and it's so incredible, they had over 50 volunteers that came to help with the event. And she said that they were already making comments, that they're looking forward to it next year, and they can't wait to start planning. But I just appreciate Ms. McCartee so much for her heart and for wanting to put this together for the students, and as I told her, this will be lifelong memories, not only for the students, but for the parents and those volunteers. And I want to also thank the law firm of Leinberger, Goggins and Blair. They gave a fabulous donation because they wanted to be able to do something to help with this prom, and so I appreciate that. But just sounds like they had a great time and really appreciative of everything that Ms. McCartee has done to, to, to change things in, in their lives. So, thank you to her. Oh, no, it's Dr. Raish again.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I, I, thank you, President Fowler. Promise this is the last one. And that's so awesome.
Isn't that awesome?
That is so awesome. That is really cool. I, I remember hearing about that and the efforts at the beginning of the year. It's phenomenal to see that as a, an amazing success. This, this may go into a future superintendent's report, I don't know, but last night, had the privilege to be at ATT Stadium. It was our art show, the reveal of our, our 5th graders, now 5th grade and 8th grade, I think is what it is. 5th and 8th grade, who, who do amazing things. And as I said repeatedly last night, it, it just showed all the more for me how even my stick figures are horrible. It, it's amazing what they do. The reason I'm bringing this up is, and I, I want to put a shout out to Lynn Nguyen, who is really the master behind all of this that goes on at, at the stadium, created the opportunities. Well, looky there. That, it, it was originally his seed plantings for many things, including the, the 5th graders getting around to go there as a field trip to learn about the art that is in the Cowboys stadium. And, yeah, you're seeing some pieces that are put together by our students. There's, there's so many, many things. What I would want to say the most is, when this first began, as Dr. Cavassos said there last night, there's always a question when these things start, "How long is this going to go? How long is this going to last?" And here we are, seven, no, let's see, five, seven, yeah, seven years, eight, eight years. So now we have, this year, the first cohort of our now graduating seniors that were 5th graders originally when they went there. And they had an amazing project that they made and did over at the CVPA. Big Phil, that's, that's a wonderful picture there of him. He's, he's the, the main art docent, if you will, for the Cowboys. So, what I'd like to really highlight here, this again, with Lynn Nguyen's kind of planting the seeds years ago, they, the Cowboys organization now, last night, awarded scholarships to these seniors, and they, they've been working on it, but now that we had our first cohort go through, and they have given, they gave last night four scholarships because they had. had first, second, and third, but they really had to, had a tie, basically, and so they awarded two at fourth place, $17,500 worth of scholarships, and it's just phenomenal. And this is not a one and done, this is an annual thing, there's Charlotte with our superintendent, city manager, one of our awardees, and Charlotte put it right out there as a commitment, this is, this is going to continue, and this is going to flourish. So, it's just amazing to see, again, planting seeds and what one idea has blossomed and grown into. It's just phenomenal. So, thank you to the Gene and Jerry Jones Foundation for doing that, and to their family, and to Lynn Nguyen and the whole arts group, Dr. Anderson and his whole team, it's just phenomenal. So, that, I promise, is it.
That's okay, Dr. Raich, if you think of anything else, you let us know. And I think that's another example of what a great partnership we have with the Dallas Cowboys, and that's a community partner, and we are so appreciative of the Jones family for all they do for our district, and they are, they're really great partners, and I have to agree, Lynn Nguyen is the best. He just has projects that are unbelievable, and the students just flourish under his direction, and we're, we're very blessed to have him in a leadership role. Anyone else? Except Dr. Raich. Anyone else? With that, we will adjourn, and we are now going back into closed.